Counselor Tumi.
Here.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor Monte. Counselor Kino.
Present.
Counselor Bernal.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Counselor President Moran.
Chair, here. Please rise for a moment of silence for those families affected by the horrible tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. Our thoughts and prayers are with them. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
In the narrow space of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, first item on the agenda is acceptance of the minute for November twentieth and December fourth. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Participant, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, a bell will ring. You have thirty seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individual. First participant, H. Mali.
Good evening, honorable member of the city council. H. Mali, fifty-three Chester Street. In the last meeting of the two thousand twelve, we as a citizen demand of you to support our police department and the union. Thanks to honorable Mayor Lantigua moving Lawrence forward, approving the Police Officer Patrolman Union contract, the leadership of Honorable Chief Romeo has been the best reason that crime rate in our city has fell nineteen percent. We demand that of you not to touch the budget or police department. Our citizens thanking our DPW for their hard work and support their dedicated worker of this DPW in their upcoming contract negotiation. Two thousand thirteen, our firefighters are coming up for their union contract. For several months, they have not got any raise. For those of you representing District E or at large, we demand of you support Tim Atwood, our friend and firefighter, in his struggle to obtain his benefit from the fire department. In many streets, citizens can see the sign, "Moving Lawrence Forward." Honorable Mayor Lantigua has rescued our public school by bringing Superintendent Riley, the hardworking scholar, to help our children. Two bridges unified our city. Now is upcoming, in upcoming election year, we demand of you, instead of criticizing our mayor, do take positive steps in support of our police department, firefighters, and our DPW. When driving our city, we as a citizen greatly appreciate the hard worker of our DPW. With a few good worker and old equipment, they have done the best leadership and the best job. In the best holiday wishes for Honorable Mayor Lantigua and member of the city council for all our citizens in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Kathy Ronge. Name and address for the record, please, Kathy.
Kathy Ronge, thirty-two Dragon Street. I just have three things I want to bring up quickly. But first, Merry Christmas to everybody. First, you know, it's hard to believe that this administration can make the wrong decision on every personnel issue that comes up before them, from the indicted police officer to the building inspector, to the DPW worker with the sick wife, to the firefighter. How can they, you know, everyone, wrong? Secondly, I haven't heard anything about the investigation into the fraud and forgery in the Elections Department. And we really need to do that. We really need to get that going. Just don't know how you expect people to have faith in this elections process, the way it is here. And thirdly, it was nice to see that we had a budget surplus in FY eleven, I guess it was. But wouldn't it be nice to see the actual numbers? You know, in the same format, it's a proposed budgets come out, you know, what actually got spent in each department for each thing? Otherwise, how can the council even make a decision on a budget if you're just going by previous budgets and not what is actually spent? Now, you know, I mean, I could file a FOIA request for this and, you know, give them a chuckle on the third floor, but this isn't something, this should be available, this should be online, this should be available for people to come in and see if they want. That's all. Thank you.
Next participant, Dick Russell.
Dick Russell, thirty-four Cross Street, Lawrence. Good evening, councilors. First of all, I'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I hope you all get what you wish for from Santa. As an aside, all I want from Santa is I want a four-way stop sign up the top across Cedar Street to stop the speeding. Never, never works, nothing happens. That's that. Okay, you guys got wished Merry Christmas. Okay, there are individuals in this building for Christmas. I just hope that they get what they deserve. Enough said. I'm hoping that the Atwoods and Sapienses can have as enjoyable a Christmas as possible despite being handed a giant lump of coal by some city officials. Onto other things. Who's going to run and pay for this gun buyback program? You had one before with some rather dubious results. We won't get into that. All I'll say is, you aren't going to get any illegal guns off the street. Nobody that's carrying a gun illegally is going to give it up for a hundred dollar food card. I wouldn't if I had one. Okay, next question. Who is going to do the repairs, or when are the repairs going to be done on the ventilation system at the South Broadway Fire Station? I don't think the city needs another repeat of the Tim Atwood situation. Okay, and with that, Merry Christmas to all of you, and until next year, good night.
Same to you, my friend. That ends public participation. Names will be submitted to the city clerk's office for the history book. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, document three oh six dash twelve, stop signs, Sunset Avenue and Lawrence Street. Mr. Clerk. Please read the notice. Let the record reflect that Counselor, the distinguished gentleman from Hampshire Street has joined the council.
Thank you. Document three oh six of two thousand twelve. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand twelve, in council chambers at seven PM, two hundred Common Street. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the stop sign section to be inserted in proper order. Sunset Ave, westbound drivers on Sunset Ave at Lawrence Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be given the opportunity and as advertised on December eighth.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to accept.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Tumi.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
I noticed that there's no written opinion from Patrolman Scanlon. Is this a normal procedure when it comes to a public hearing?
We should have a recommendation from, from the police. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
If you recall, these four intersections are all T-section stop signs, which require a stop by law. So because they require a stop by law, Officer Scanlon didn't want to write a report, it just, it's already required by law. But where people aren't stopping there, and they're not either remembering the law or it needs to be reminded to them, the district counselor really wanted the stop sign placed. So we initially talked about just having DPW put the signs up, but after going through that with the police department, they felt that if the sign is up, it should be ordnanced. So there's no police report for these four items, because all four of them are T-intersections, which is required by state law, to stop, to come to a complete stop. That, that, these are unique. Usually, we always have a report from the officer. You are correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, I'm not sure, but every city's in town, you pretty much, you see that at every T-intersection, you never, hardly see stop signs. You're supposed to have it, but you hardly see it. I mean, I've been to different towns and I never see stop sign on some of the T. Supposed to be there. Not sure why they don't, why they don't put it. Anybody else?
It's actually, my impression is the actually opposite, that there's really no need for the stop signs, because it is the law. I'm just concerned, I mean, I'll be voting for this out of courtesy to my colleague, who seems that there's an issue there, but if we were to have a stop sign on every T, we're going to be using up our entire sign budget just on top, on stop signs. And so that's, I just, I think that we should be very judicious about where we put these up, because if I went in my district and every time I saw a T, I wanted a stop sign up there, I can exhaust the entire budget, and each one of us could probably do that. So if we could just use some restraint, I think that would be helpful. But in this particular case, I'm willing to, as a courtesy, extend that to my, to my colleague.
Exact conversation happened at the ordinance committee level, and Counselor, who actually had maybe two, two times or three times as many, after having that exact conversation, said he just chose the ones that truly needed it. And I think he did weed it out quite effectively, so, yeah, but your point is well taken.
I do appreciate it. To you, Mr. President.
Sure.
Counselor Bernal has explained it, I think, much better than I could say it. We have actually withdrawn some of the documents that I have submitted originally, because I, you know, after speaking with the officer, I came to realize that, you know, he's correct. But these four, in particular, are located in areas that are extremely busy streets, and, you know, they do need to have more clarity for drivers in that area. And for that, you know, reason, I think that it's important that, that we do support it. And I appreciate Counselor from District F supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vasquez, because you live in the Ellington District.
I do.
And you have a lot of speed races over there in that district. I noticed that. One of the things that you might want to do, my personal opinion, is trying to get an accident report and identify those locations where you have the most accident. Probably attack them that way. Motion to the table, speak second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document three, three eleven dash twelve, stop sign, Auburn and Cross Street. Mr. Clerk. Please read the notice.
Document three eleven, two thousand twelve. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, in city council chambers, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. at seven PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the stop sign section of the code to be inserted in proper order. Auburn Street, westbound drivers at Auburn Street, on Auburn Street at Cross Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, published on December eighth.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to accept.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document three thirteen dash twelve, stop sign, Holly and Cross Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document three thirteen, two thousand twelve. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, in city council chambers, two hundred Common Street, seven PM. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the stop sign section of the code to be inserted in proper order. Holly Street, westbound drivers on Holly Street at Cross Street, as published on December eighth.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Do we hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document three nineteen dash twelve, stop sign, Washington Street and Manchester Street. Mr. Clerk. Please read the notice.
Document three nineteen, two thousand twelve. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, in city council chambers, two hundred Common Street at seven PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the stop sign section of the code to be inserted in proper order. Washington Street, northbound drivers on Washington Street at Manchester Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published on December eighth.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to accept.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is communication from mayor, city official, city attorney, as none appropriation orders resolution, none committee report, document one ninety-eight dash twelve, parking eighty-eight Jackson Street. Remove one two-hour parking space and replace it with one fifty-minute parking space from seven AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Signing came out from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. On Thursday, December sixth, the ordinance committee did meet and review this item. Just for clarification, because it's the removal of one ordinance and the adoption of a new ordinance, the, I believe it was the city attorney's office actually broke it down into two documents for us, which is a one ninety-eight A and a one ninety-eight B. One is the removal and one is the creation of a new ordinance. I don't know if you want me to take those as a block, or you want me to do them, that they're both to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney's office, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document two hundred dash twelve, parking Lexington Street between Myrtle and Lawrence Street. Removal of no parking ordinance. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
It's a report, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, it is, we have to order public hearing on that.
That would be a report.
Yeah. So at the Thursday, December sixth, meeting of the ordinance committee, the committee did unanimously move to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney to change the parking at Lexington Street between Myrtle and Lawrence Streets, removing the no parking, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document two seventy-two dash twelve, Poplar Street. One way from Basswood Street to Alder Street. Mr. Clerk, I mean, not Mr. Clerk, Madam Chair from the ordinance committee, so used to the public hearing.
No problem. Again, at that December sixth meeting of the ordinance committee, there was a request to have Poplar be a one-way from Basswood to Alder Streets. And at Counselor Vasquez's suggestion, they did, initially, it just said Poplar Street and didn't give those specific Basswood to Alder, but I guess that makes it parallel to the, keeps it consistent with the, another street going the opposite direction. And the officer that was with us that evening also recommended that change to the ordinance. So coming out of the committee was a unanimous favorable recommendation to make Poplar be a one-way from Basswood to Alder, and I make that, ordering the public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney's office, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document three twenty-one dash twelve, disclosure by municipal employer of financial interest. Captain Frank Martin from the fire department. Signing came out from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Captain Martin is a firefighter with the Lawrence Fire Department. He also plows, and under state law, he needs to make a municipal disclosure, which he does do annually. His paperwork is all in order. Captain Martin could not be with us tonight. He did call and let us know that he would not be able to be here. But as his paperwork's all in order, I don't think there's a need for him to be, indeed come out of committee with unanimous favorable recommendation to accept his disclosure, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? As have it. Next item on the agenda is document three four zero dash twelve, all gold and second-hand dealer license, one ninety-seven Essex Street. Edwin Abreu. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
At the ordinance committee meeting, the applicant, Edwin Abreu, did appear before us for all gold and second-hand dealer license. The paperwork was in order, the sign-off from the police department is there. We did stress to the applicant that the sale of gold, in particular, is very regulated, has to be documented and logged, and those logs have to be accessible to the police department. Told him there's several regulations he needs to be aware of under state law, and he said he is aware of them or will make himself aware of them. It did come out of subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and this is a new applicant, this is not a renewal, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All, Counselor Tumi.
I was looking through the paperwork, and there's a couple of them here, for instance, there's all gold and second-hand dealer application instructions. It gives instructions as to what he has to do. He's supposed to apply for query, but I think it might be referenced in the paperwork that was signed off by Secretary of State. Is that correct? Because the states in the first, in the first statement there that obtain a current business certificate issued by the city of Lawrence, if you do not already have one, business certificate applications must be submitted to the office of city clerk, et cetera.
That's here, yep.
A copy of the certificate is good, a good corporate standing issued by the Massachusetts Secretary of State must be attached to the entity. And he has one, I believe, here, right?
Yes, he does.
Yes, I do. And he also has the sign-off from the police chief. Chief Romero. He also has a sign-off from Chief Romero.
We don't get the query reports anymore, maybe that's what you're, instead, the chief signs that he's seen the query report.
If he signs off, he's seen the query.
Yeah, the police chief has signed the document, it's in the package.
Okay.
But we don't get, yeah.
Thank you.
We don't get the query report anymore. I get, I don't think that's appropriate. I think at some point, we made that determination, so instead, we get a document signed by Chief Romero that he's seen it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? No? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. You're all set. Thank you very much. Good evening. Next item on the agenda is withdrawn, there's none. All business, document three forty-three dash twelve, appointment, city attorneys, office assistant city attorney position, Attorney Daniel Cuzo. Signing came out from the personnel committee. Seems like the chair of the personnel committee is not here. Vice chair of the personnel committee is here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The vice chair from the personnel committee.
As is related to me, the, this item thirty-four twelve, the appointment of city attorneys, office assistant city attorney, Daniel Cuzo, was before the, the personnel committee, and it was sent up with a favorable recommendation. I do that as a form of a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We can have discussion, because Mr. Cuzo is here, if anybody wishes to talk to him.
If anybody wants, wants to answer, I have a question for him before I call him. No?
I do.
You have a question?
Yeah, I just did a couple.
Counselor plant?
Thank you. Welcome, how are you doing?
Is it a question to the applicant or, or the city attorney?
There'll be some for each.
Okay. Who do you want to, who do you want to see first?
Mr. Cuzo's fine.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, how are you doing?
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Cuzo.
Daniel Cuzo, COC UZZO, seventy-four Walnut Street, Everett, Mass.
Thank you very much. I had a chance to look over your application, and it appears that there were things there that we need to, to be able to fill the position. It seems that you're qualified. Are, has any discussion of a contract been discussed with you?
Yes, sir. It's in the process of being negotiated. There's been a template suggested to the city, and we're in the ongoing discussions with it right now.
It says here in our ordinances, and this is not for you, this is for the current city attorney, that a copy of any contract or memorandum of employment, which the mayor proposes to enter into with a designee, must be submitted to the, to the council. This is under two oh four, two point oh four dash zero eight zero. So if, if there is that, maybe, that's the only question I have for you. The other stuff is, is very questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Bodie, thank you.
Attorney Bodie?
Good evening, councilors. Just one moment. Counselor plant while I make an inquiry. Do we have a draft here with us? We can provide you with the draft this evening, it's not final. Could you, could you Frank, and maybe the other one as well? Yeah. Our intention, just so you're aware, our intention was to provide it to you this evening. Unfortunately, because of other matters, I haven't been able to attend to it. Frank has been doing the yeoman's work in terms of preparing it and so forth. In a nutshell, one of the concerns that this council had when we put this position out, and posted it, was that the person come in and be here on a temporary basis, so that if the person's performance is unsatisfactory, we can terminate the relationship forthwith. There is a honeymoon period during which time we can do that. I, I forget whether it's six months or a year.
Six months.
Six months. Six months is what we've agreed to, after which we'd enter into a one-year contract, which would be renewable for up to two additional one-year terms.
So I take a look at that, obviously, while we're waiting for that information.
It is a full-time position, just so, further, further information, and the salary that we've agreed to is eighty-five thousand.
Is this position been unfilled for six months or longer?
Yes.
You realize that before you can actually advertise that it has to come before the council again?
I don't know whether it was, whether it had been advertised previously. I know this has, this was advertised initially, I believe it was February of this year.
Just so you're aware, this is two point oh four dash, or point oh zero four zero. Any position established by an ordinance duly adopted by the city council that remains vacant, unfilled, or unoccupied for more than six continuous months shall not be re-advertised, reposted, and/or refilled without approval by the city council. Prior to issuing permission to re-advertise, repost, and refill such a position, the city council shall review and approve the job description, rate of pay, and benefits applicable to that position. This section shall apply to all positions in all city departments which remain vacant, unfilled, or unoccupied for more than six continuous months after the effective date of the ordinance codified in this section. So if this has been more than six, more than six months, shouldn't we have received a copy of that before we're sent to, to advertise?
I don't know that you weren't sent a copy. I don't know what you were sent and what you were not sent. I can say that the impetus for the advertising and, and the posting of the job was the council. This council wanted, at that last budget period, et cetera, wanted to see these positions filled. That was the reason, among others, I mean, I want to see them filled as well, but that was one of the reasons. So in terms of getting approval from the council, I take that as task and approval, but if you want to, you know, come back again and go through the process and get, you know, get, get the council to take that vote, I'm perfectly fine with doing that.
Let me just say one thing, is that out of all the applications or all the package that we received, this is the closest one that we've actually received to actually meeting the requirements of our ordinances. I mean, I am, the bar's kind of low, but I'm impressed with the fact that we actually got names. We actually had the job, the advertisement, we actually had the, the ordinances as is required. And so we actually, I mean, this is better than any other effort, frankly, in my last three years that I've seen with respect to getting information to us in this time of matter. These are a couple of things that stood out to me, and I realized that I've been one of the biggest proponents of trying to get this, and we've been, I've been talking about this, I think, through two budget cycles now. But when we do it, we need to do it right.
Yep.
Not that, it doesn't say that we don't need it, I don't want to delay this any further, but we need to do these things right, because there's other positions in this city where positions aren't being, let me back, take a step back. Most recently, in our last full city council meeting, we actually, because of some of the concerns I had in the budget cycle, they had to go ahead, repost, re-ordinance something, and then they went ahead and hi, or about to hire someone. So they were trying to do it the right way. In this particular case, I think we're falling short of that again.
Well, I would like to accept that as a compliment of me, or as a criticism of me, either way, but I really had very little to do with it. Most of, most of the packages, in fact, almost all of the packages that you have in front of you was provided to you by the Personnel Department. I had very little to do with it, and I'm not saying that as a, as an excuse. To the contrary, I would love to have had more to do with it, but this process has been laborious. It's been long and coming. These, these interviews were conducted last summer. The applications were received in May, and fortunately, I had Frank Bonet able to provide the back, the background and resources to give that information to you. I'm pleased that it's better than the average, and I'm sorry that it's off the mark.
And what would be this, this individual's primary responsibility as compared to both of them?
This position that we would be seeking to fill here is, is the, the Labor Relations Attorney, which is classified in our ordinance as the second assistant city attorney. The reason this individual, who I think has a stellar background, and I'm happy to elaborate on it if you, if you would like me to, although the paperwork is in front of you, and I'm sure you've reviewed it. This particular individual has five years in-house experience with a city, the city of Peabody, as well as seven years in-house with labor unions. So he possesses an extraordinarily deep background in labor relations law, including appearances before the EEOC, MCAD, DLR, and various other letters of the alphabet, I'm sure. He has processed grievances, and one of the things that we would charge him with, I believe, is, under the supervision and with the cooperation of the Personnel Director, he would assist us in the processing of grievances, so that we can do it more efficiently and, and, and better. Not just more efficiently, but that we do a better job of it, drawing on his background and experience. So that's why, that niche, that's why I'm saying this would be the second assistant city attorney. The other candidate that we have is also excellent, very well credentialed, but has a, a different background that complements the backgrounds in the office, but would not be the best fit for the labor relations attorney.
And what, you know, we spent a lot of money on the labor stuff, the labor outside counsel, and I think it was what Morgan Brown enjoys, the, one of our big firms that we've been spending a lot of money on, not only this year, but in the last couple of years, and fully hoags, maybe, do they do, they do labor issues as well?
They do some things for us, but not very much, not quite, not a lot of volume. But yes, they do some for us as well.
So I know that we've been spending an awful lot of money on that, and I, one of the things that I've been railing against is, all this money that we're spending on these outside councils, let's bring counsel in. We will save money, and then have the ability to use those other, those attorneys for other purposes besides their main, primary purposes, in this particular case, labor stuff. So I'm, you know, while I'm, you know, I'm not, it's a mixed message. The message is, I wish we did this the correct way completely. The other side of it is, I'm glad that we've, we're finally getting somebody there, so it's a mixed message. I do have one question, though, for, for the applicant, while we're waiting for Mr. Bonet.
Yes, sir.
It's a tough environment. You've, I'm sure, you've done your due diligence, read the news clips, talked to other, maybe other colleagues and people to get a sense as to the environment that you're going to be thrust into here at City Hall. I mean, the fact of the matter is, the mayor is a very difficult person to work for. You could get, I mean, he can be very, he, his temper is short, he can be very, he can go after you personally, it could get pretty ugly, and I'm just hoping that you have the wherewithal to be able to rise above those kinds of situations, and do what's best for the city, despite the potential political pressure you might feel. With all that said, how, I mean, what's your reaction coming into an environment where those kinds of issues, indictments that are surrounding us?
Counselor, just stick with the gentleman.
I am, I'm going to get a sense as to...
But you got, you got to understand, this is your opinion, that mayor is a tough person to deal with. Your opinion is your problem, you have a difficult time, I don't think, you can't speak for all of us.
I'm not speaking, I'm speaking. I never said we, I said I.
Stick with the gentleman, if you want to interview him, interview him. Whatever, the mayor is, is not an issue here. There's a gentleman before us, we have to interview him.
So the question here, and I realize you want to defend the mayor...
I'm not defending the mayor, I'm just...
What I, what I want to find out is, your temperament, how you can respond to this kind of environment? Have you been dealing with anything like that in the past? How do you expect to deal with something like that?
Well, sure, I mean, with my experience in Peabody, dealing with the mayor on an everyday basis, dealing with the department heads on an everyday basis, you're dealing with numbers, a number of personalities, I had to wear a number of different hats. So it's something that I'm fully aware of, and I'm certainly well experienced in. So that being said, there's, there's no issues with regards to dealing with personalities, it's something that I'm experienced with.
I'm just hopeful that you stick to your guns. When you have an opinion, that you stick to that. Certainly, you're open to, of course, reevaluate your opinion, but do it in such a way where you're doing it in good faith and honest to yourself. And I know there's a lot of pressures that can be put to bear in this particular building by people who you're superior. So I just, it's a tough position, and I just, I'm hopeful that you can rise above even those pressures, and even though you could feel the threat of going in a certain direction that you, that you, like I said, rise above that and put that aside, and do what, and give the city, us, whoever it is that your particular client is at that particular point, your best effort in responding.
I think ethically, I'm bound to do that, so.
Okay. Anybody else? No?
Just before I call the question, just, as the Council President, I'm going to just make sure that, there's nine of us, every single one of us have our own opinion, disregard any comment that any person says about anybody else. You make your own assumption, you have the experience, you've been in this situation in the past. It's because a person says that this person is this and that, don't believe that. You're, you're, you're a person that has an extended background. Not everybody here, I know one of the councilors says that we're trying to defend the administration, we're not defending the administration. You're here, you're before us, the question is whether you can do this job or not. Not, it's political this, political that, negative this on the newspaper, negative that. Everybody knows in this plant, in this city, who can get along with this, with this administration, who doesn't. So don't pay attention to any of this nonsense, make your own assumption.
I take a personal privilege. The comments, the comments that I make...
No, no. You're out of order, you're out of order. Motion on the table, speaking second.
Council President, for making those comments, no.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 344-12, Appointment, City Attorney, Office Assistant City Attorney, Attorney Raquel Ruano. Where's the assistant?
Do you want to speak with the Council President?
No, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the Vice Chair of the Personnel Committee. Where did he go? Sorry. Looking for a motion to take a three-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.